You are now officially on record having raised that question. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we will keep moving on the agenda. There are two items under the consent agenda.
Which is back, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry?
The consent agenda, which is back while we're remote, so we're good to go.
Okay. The first item. Okay, may I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda, including a memorandum of understanding, or memorandum of agreement, sorry, between Governor State University and Flosspor School District 161, as well as the FOIA requests. So we are approving both items under the consent agenda.
They're moved.
Second, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Thanks.
Yes?
Kratos? Leetstra?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes. Sorry, I was late.
Okay, thank you. And Horath?
Yes, and the motion has passed. We now are going to move to Fran Labella's second most favorite topic to talk about, which is the property tax levy.
Oh, my goodness.
Second, I'm pretty sure it's first.
Is it first? You get really excited when it's budget time. I don't know, we'll see how this one goes, but maybe there may be.
You're all good to go, Fran. Just keep an eye on the waiting room in case you have to let people in.
Got it. All right, let's see. Let's start. All right, we got that up?
All set.
All right, okay. Like you said, one of my favorites, tax levy. Okay, let's start with what our primary drivers of the levy are. Once again, all of these are statutory requirements under the property tax extension limitation law. The most important piece of the levy is probably CPI. And CPI is, again, it's the December of 2019 CPI that we use, that is by statute. And we'll use that CPI for the 2020 levy. So it's the CPI in the prior year, December. Their second most important piece is the prior year's extension, because essentially what the levy is, when all is said and done, and all the confusion is out there, the levy is really your prior year's extension times CPI. And that's pretty much what you're able to extend. The only increase in that comes from new property. So really, you're looking at a CPI increase, no matter what. The next piece is assessed valuation, and the reason this is important is because it essentially changes what your rate is going to be. And we'll talk a little bit about that, because it is the South Side's triennial this year. Again, new property, because that's the only thing that will increase your levy beyond the CPI extension. And again, this is all statutory requirement. So this year, the CPI is 2.3%. So overall, you'll see our levy increase about 2.3%. Our prior year extension is that $23.8 million. That number is, has the abatement, that's the first year that the abatement comes in. So we were levying somewhere around $25 million. We're actually down to 23.8 because of the $1.9 million abatement last year. This year, we're looking again at a South Side triennial assessment, and we're looking at about a 12% to 15% increase in property values, and I'll give you some information from the assessor's website in a minute. We're going to estimate new property somewhere around between half a million dollars to a million dollars. That's always kind of a guesstimate. Last year, our new property was about $600,000. So we'll go there as well, about the same amount. Oops. This is difficult, Dana, trying to admit people and do this at the same time. Again, we're continuing the property tax relief grant this year. We're required to abate for two years, so our levy will be off of that $23.8 million, because the abatement will stay on. Okay, off of the Cook County Assessor's website, and if you want to get more information, there's whole reports out there from the assessor, right here at the assessor's website. But bottom line, and I lifted these straight out of his reports on the South Side triennial assessment, and again, we have properties both in Rich Township and Bloom Township. So when we take a look, this was the 2019 property values, the assessed valuations in 2019. And here are the values in 2020. Now, what the assessor has been doing, and we've kind of had these conversations before, is he started assessing the commercial properties just a little bit differently than he had been, had been in his previous, his predecessor, assessed them one way, Barios, and Kegy's doing it a little bit differently. And what it's doing is it's shifting the burden a little off of the residents and onto the commercial properties. So you can see from here that he's actually shifted 8.62% of the burden from residents onto commercial properties in Rich Township, and about 9.5% in Bloom Township, which in theory should help the residences' bills a little bit, but it's going to definitely hurt the commercial properties. Additionally, you can see that in total, Rich Township's assessed values are up about 15%, and Bloom's are up about 12.7%. So we'll be looking at an increase in EAV somewhere between 12 and 15%. CPI, again, here's just a nice little chart showing you where we've been, back to 2014, we were at a point and a half, we've been down those two years, a little less than 1%. Two years in a row, we were at 2.1%. Last year, we were at 1.9, and this year, we're coming in at 2.3. For our projection models, we've put in a 2% increase across the board moving forward. So today, and thank you, Cam, for sharing with me, the PAPAS report came out and was reported on the Chicago Tribune, in the Chicago Tribune's article today. You can find the whole PAPAS report here at the Cook County Treasurer's website, but essentially what the report was saying is that while CPI had only grown by 30-something percent since the year 2000, property tax bills had grown by significantly larger than that across Cook County and Tull County. And then even, you know, it was broken down by the different taxing bodies. So I went and grabbed ours, and actually, these numbers do match to what was in the PAPAS report, but I pulled out 2006, because I can't get any reports going back any further than that off of the Cook County Treasurer's website. But going back to 2006, our tax capped funds, we were levying at 17.9 million in 2006. In 2019, we were at 22.6 million, which was a 26% increase. On total levy, and by total levy, I mean when we add our bond and interest, our bond payment here, it went from 19 million to 23.8 million, so a 25% increase over those years. CPI actually rose by 28.1%. So when you see the PAPAS report come out, and it's saying, you know, Flosspor's bills went up 82% from 2006 to 2019, we are not part of the massive increase over 28%. Now, a couple of things that are playing into that factor. Number one, remember, we put on almost a $2 million abatement last year, so that significantly helped. But there's also a few things to consider, and I find the PAPAS report to be a little bit misleading on a couple of levels. Number one, back here in 2006, we didn't have a Meyer. That's going to increase this number by that new property and any other new property that's put on over the years. Second of all, for a lot of the districts that are out there, whose names end up on this report with numbers that are much higher than ours, a lot of the ones that have much larger numbers were, they had a rate increase that was property tax rate referendum, which was a voted-on referendum, whether it be for bonds or for rate. So I appreciate what she's doing and what she's saying about the increase in those property taxes, but you have to remember that some of that was driven by new property, and some of it was driven by voter-approved referendum. So while it's interesting information to have, there's reasons behind it that need to be considered as well.
Would you agree, Fran, that whatever problem she's describing in her report, we're not contributing to it for our taxpayers?
Absolutely, we are absolutely not, and that's what I'm proving here. And actually, if you look at the end of her report, she lists all of the individual taxing bodies and what their percentage increase was, and she has us at that 25%, just like I have here. So my numbers matched out to hers when I went through the report. So here we have kind of a chart that's going to show you what we expect our tax extensions to do. So this was last year, and this is where we're estimating our 2020 to come in with a 2.3% increase. You'll see, really using a 2% increase, year over year, we increase at about half a million dollars a year. You'll see us drop off here in 2023, and the reason that it drops off that way is for here, it's our debt service fund, that's when our bonds roll off here in 2023. So this is where we're going to have that conversation about our long-range financial plan and our long facilities. And that would be when we'd want to talk about, do we want to put more bonds on so that it wouldn't really increase the bills? It won't decrease the bills, but it won't increase the property tax bills, and we'll be able to do some work on the facilities. I'm putting this up because I want people to understand, when you start looking at our projection models, you're going to see some really wonky things. So across the top here, so the totals here at the bottom are levies by levy year. Now, our levy years are in arrears. So my levy year 18 is actually realized in fiscal year 19 and 20. So when you look over here to the right, you're going to see the fiscal year totals. And the reason I bring this up is because the levy year 19 is when we abate. So we had, had a levy of $25.2 million in 2018. We abated that almost $2 million, and we end up with a $23.8 million levy in 2019. The weird thing happens is the way they're collected, while it's a 19 levy, the majority of our decrease actually comes over here in 2021, which is this year. Almost the whole amount is going to be hit here because of the fact that in 19, remember that first installment is 55% of the prior year's extension? That's without the abatement. So we're collecting too much in the first installment, and all of the abatement's going to hit you on the rear end on the second installment, which will hit this year in 2021. So it's going to look like our taxes dropped significantly in 2021, and then they make kind of this rebound effect in 2022. And the reason I bring this up is because when we come to our financial projections, you're going to see this, this strange anomaly here. So this year, our taxes are almost artificially low, the next year, they seem to pop up, and you're looking at this going, how is that possible for us to have a 6% increase when we're, you know, subject to the property tax extension law? And the reason is how it's collected. You'll also see that while this year, now granted, a lot of this deficit is being driven by construction, but what happens then is we pop back up, and now, the only thing in expenditures that we put in there is some increase in the salaries, because we know what those are going to be, and the other is flat with the exception of the construction. We took that off here. But you'll see, we're essentially flat on other, but we've got some room here then in our bottom line for what increases in other expenditures we're going to have. So what that does then is kind of, you know, you'll see this big drop off this year, it's a combination of less property taxes and the construction, and then we're going to kind of level off. The red number is our estimated year-end, and the purple number is our estimated low-point cash, because remember, we only receive property taxes two times a year, so we'll have, you know, ebbs and flows within here, but this is our projected year-end up here. And we'll keep working with this model as we go on through the year. This is the nasty spreadsheet of how we actually come up with our levy, but the big thing to know is that we're looking at a 13% increase in the EAV, we're looking at new property of about half a million dollars. And then, of course, a 2.3% CPI, so that the bottom line, we'd be looking at about $23.2 million. I will probably levy a little bit more than that within the funds, just so that in case the property comes in any higher, we'll be able to capture any funds that are accessible to us. And then, of course, our bond and interest, but here is the big thing, this truth in taxation here. What truth in taxation law says is that if we are 5% or higher, that we have to put the black box in the newspaper and make sure that the public knows what we're doing. The history around here has been that we put that black box in the newspaper, no matter what, so that our taxpayers know what's going on, and we will continue that trend, but know, right now, we're looking at, you know, 2% to 3% is what we're looking at, at putting up. So our next steps, I'll meet with the finance committee, and we will go through all the itty-bitty details on this and answer any questions and concerns that they may have. Then we'll bring this levy back to the board on November 9th to approve the tentative levy, which is what this is. Then we'll have about a month before, and it'll go into the newspaper, et cetera, and then on December 14th, we'll have the public hearing and we'll adopt the 2020 levy. Questions?
Fran, I have said this, but I think I may have missed it, the continuation of the abatement, how long, how long is that?
So we're required to do it two years, so it was last year and this year. So next year is when you're going to have that decision to make of whether you put any or, you know, any or all of that money back onto the tax rolls.
Okay.
And we can talk about that, really, as we get further into the year, and we see, there's a lot of things happening this year that I think you, we should see how they play out before we even start having that conversation. Number one, COVID, I mean, you know, this is, this is having a heck of an effect on the economy in general, so we really should watch that. Two, the income tax referendum that's on the ballot, you know, just next week, that's also something we need to watch, because that may or may not have an impact on our state funding. So, you know, let's, let this year play out a little bit before we start even having a conversation about where we're going to go with that levy.
Anything else?
A couple of questions. I guess first, this question is for the board. Do any of my fellow board members have any interest or appetite for exploring extending our levy by less than the full CPI amount in this year?
Remind us, Fran, what did we do last year?
We put on CPI, but then we abated.
Got it.
So overall, we were down about 5.5%. My concern, of course, being that our collections are also dropping, which is a concern.
Cam, ask the question again.
I'm just asking, for all of us, whether, you know, in past years and prior incarnations of the board, Merle, for example, was always a frequent advocate of at least considering, at least discussing whether or not we should extend the tax levy by less than CPI. So Fran's recommendation is we extend by CPI, and, you know, I can probably talk for hours as to why extending by CPI consistently is good policy. At the same time, we consistently have a number of taxpayers who email us or call us or would like to see their taxes go down a little bit. It's not an easy decision to consider. Some governing bodies in Cook County have done that, and it tends to be a long, lengthy discussion. But, you know, I am open to discussing it, I'm just wondering if anyone else on the board has any interest in pursuing that discussion, and I don't mean to put everyone on the spot.
So I couldn't answer that until I meet with the finance committee, I mean, or...
It's a better way of, I put it poorly, because it does, the way, but the phrase it does put you guys in this. So maybe for you, Misha, are there finance committee reasons why it's a terribly stupid idea? Please tell me if it is.
So, I mean, as you know, it's a, it's comp, and I hate to use this word, it's complicated, but there are so many moving pieces that go with it, as we know, and so there are just some nitpicky questions that I have, just logistics that I have for Fran, that I will not, I will vote for the finance committee, because I think that's just a better place to bother Fran. So I do not see, just off of what we've always talked about, for every finance committee, I, of myself, don't see what we gain by going less than the CPI. But this could be a conversation we can have, but we've had this conversation in various ways over the years that I've been on the board, and that we've had a finance committee, and we kind of just kind of do this round-robin conversation, and we kind of get back to, not because we didn't try, but because of the necessity of the things that we need to get done. So, but again, it's, I, that's just my, this is our first Cal meeting about it. We have a finance committee coming up, but I personally didn't say anything without actually talking to the finance committee.
One of the things I think you need to probably also consider is, you know, we go back to that conversation that we had before, and I'll go back to the PAPAS report. Now, if you go out onto her website, you'll be able to actually click onto your personal property and compare your bills from 2000 to 2019 and what your percentage increase is. Remember, we have absolutely no control over the individual taxpayer's bill. That has to do with the assessed valuation and what your increase or decrease is compared to your neighbors and every other, you know, property within the district. So I can tell you for sure that the district only got a 25% increase, but that doesn't mean that somebody isn't going to pull up their property tax bill and say, oh my God, she lied, mine was 60% increase. There are going to be properties that are significantly higher. So in that same vein, even if you were to freeze your piece of this levy, first of all, you're only one of the taxing bodies on the bill, so somebody may or may not recognize that you didn't take in any additional money. Additionally, it is very unlikely that someone's bill will be identical one year to the next, even if you freeze on our line, because the assessments change property to property, and their percentage of the whole changes year after year. So it makes it very difficult to explain to taxpayers whether or not they actually received, you know, benefit from this or not, but you as a whole will definitely see that difference.
Okay, and let me also, as the other part of the finance committee, let me also address your question, Cam. I actually agree with Misha. I don't have a final position to offer at this point, because I, we haven't met yet to discuss these numbers. And after we do meet, I'll definitely have had a chance to go through a lot of those variables to come back with a more honest assessment. That I do understand the value in looking at whether or not we can do anything for the taxpayers, but also the other balances, also making sure that we have enough funding, because we also have a deficit going on. So again, there's just a lot that I can't speak to right now, because I haven't met with the committee yet.
I totally understand. I apologize for putting you guys on the spot, I didn't phrase that very well. But I think, I guess, let's, my final comment is this, there may be value in the board at least explaining why it's deciding to adopt CPI, or to say, look, we've considered not doing it, and here are the reasons why. I think that has value to at least a subset of our taxpayers that consistently ask us about that.
I agree with what Cameron said on that. I think that, although I am vehemently opposed to, to not doing what Fran has recommended, and what others have recommended over the years, which is to, to keep up with CPI as the costs of school go up, we have to, our costs go up, and that's, that's just the bottom line. But I agree that it is important to at least entertain the question, because we do represent the entire community, not just what, you know, what we personally think, and then people around us who think the same thing. And I think that we owe the conversation.
I would agree with Cam and Steve that I think we should at least entertain it, and I think what it would be nice to paint is a picture to the community of, if we don't adopt CPI, what will that look like for us, you know, going, so I'm, I'm all for looking into the prospect.
I think this is the exercise that we started a few years ago. For that very reason, you know, regardless of how each of us feel as individuals, or how we decide to vote as a board, it's always worth going through the exercise so that, to Cam's point, we are able, you know, if we're stopped at Waltz, if we're stopped taking a walk somewhere, and someone asks us about it, we need to be able to fully explain why we decided. I am personally, I think I fall in your camp, Cam, with saying there's all types of reasons you could justify staying with CPI, but I am in, I'm in full support, as I am every year, in looking at our fund balance and deciding on whether or not we want to take it down to directly support students and instruction and learning. I know we just did that for projects that we had this past year, but I think it's always worth going through, you know, Dana, you know, what's that wish list? What does it look like? What can we afford to do? As long as we stay within the comfort zone that I think Fran has laid out for us in terms of how far we're willing to allow the fund balance to drop, then I think that that's a worthy discussion as well. So we need to know what those wish list items are to have that conversation. We don't need to have that for November 9th. I think, you know, going, having Fran paint a picture, as she has done in the past, what does it look like if we don't take full CPI would be very helpful. And when are we voting on this?
You won't adopt until December, but you'll bring, November 9th, they'll do the tentative, you'll approve the tentative. At that point in time, I can give you a couple of scenarios very quickly.
Okay, so I think that would be extremely helpful, and then at some point later, we can start having the conversation, we get through this, but we can start, I think it's worth having the conversation about, what do we have on deck for next year that we might need to consider tapping into the fund balance to support?
Absolutely, we can bring that back. You know, it's also, Michelle, you bring a good point, we'll also, for the finance committee, bring back our policy on the fund balance and the adjustments that the board decided to make there as well, so we're looking at this in the whole context.
Yeah, because I always forget, you know, I think some of us are risky. You know, I think some of us are risk averse, some of us are not. But I think we forget where we, where we collectively said where our comfort level is. And it's probably, you know, where Fran said hers and then mine's probably, I take it up a little. I mean, but that's our jobs, right? We are, we, we, there's a huge fiduciary role that the Board takes. And so for that reason alone, it's worth just exploring options so that we have a, we make an informed decision in December.
Absolutely.
So Fran, was it last year or the year before? You did this really good where you picked sample residents and then you walked and you paced us, you remember? Like, I think if that gets updated, that would also help because that was very helpful.
Absolutely, yeah. Then, then we can kind of take a look at some properties and see what the abatement actually did. And we can see then what this would do to the next year's, you know, all things being equal. Yeah, we can easily do that. That's a simple update.
All right. You're speaking Fran's language, Misha. I always try, I always. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the tax levy? If not, then we will go on to September financial reports.
Yes, and I'm gonna share something different now. So you know how excited I get about Forecast 5. Well, I've got some new stuff now. And so starting very soon, and I'm not sure if you guys can see this very well.
Yep.
But I've got a nice little dashboard that we've now started creating that I will be putting up on the website every month. And the nice thing about this is that while it's a pretty little picture, it's also somewhat interactive. So this is the monthly expenditure overview for, so this is the month ending September. That's in your, your packets now. But the nice thing about this dashboard, so this is the expenditures, and you can see we are trending favorably. But one thing that pops out very clear is you look at that O and M budget and it's way up here. And if you look at our total spending year over year, it's looking like we're actually spending a whole lot more than we have in the past. And given that we don't have students in, it's kind of like, why? Well, the reason is construction. What I love about these dashboards is, and when we put them up on the website, anyone who goes to the website will be able to do exactly what I'm about to do now. It's interactive. So what happens if I take out capital outlay? And they'll be able to actually do those things and it becomes very interactive. So you'll see without construction, our expenditures are down year over year. But of course, when you put the construction back in, it looks like we're spending a whole lot more this year than we did last year. And we can do that with anything within this dashboard. There's also one for revenues. And let me see, I bring up the revenue one. And here we go with the revenue. Now, I want to talk about this in this report right away. We are looking unfavorable because of our property taxes year over year. But again, remember that the Cook County had moved the date that they were actually due from August 1st over to October 1st. So while we are down about $800,000, I can tell you that in the first half of October, we have received another three quarters of a million dollars. So it's not looking quite as bad as this one.
Can I ask a quick point? Love this. This is great. But is there any way to, when you do make this public on the website, that you could have any sort of like comment that you could flag for an editorial for exactly what you just said?
Sure, absolutely, I can. I was thinking, so I haven't quite figured out how I want to put it up on the website yet, but it will probably have some sort of a narrative to it.
Okay, because I can see this, somebody glancing at this and saying, oh, my God, whole place, look at this, you know?
Yeah, and the next month it'll change. Like I said, next month, you're going to see this, this change. And then we also have, and this might be something we're even, even more interested in, is a quarterly overview. So you can see your quarterly revenues and how we're doing. You can look at our expenses and it compares us from, you know, the quarter this year to quarter last year. And there's a whole bunch of things in here. And additionally, we can look at our fund balances. So there's a lot of really neat reports that we were working on this week. But I just wanted to share those with you and will be you know, putting some of those things up on the website very soon.
Thank you.
All right, Dana, do I have to give this back to you?
And then you can make me the host again.
I have to make you the host?
So that was great, Fran. It'll be interesting, are you able to track hits on to that dashboard? Like, how many times, like, can you tell if the community is actually going and looking at that?
Oh, I imagine that we can, just on our websites, those, that's tracked on the website. Dana, how do I turn this back over to you?
If you hover over my name and click on more.
Got it.
It'll give you a dropdown. Yeah, we can, we can run those metrics on that. Michelle, we can plan on bringing that back.
I'm just curious. I mean, my guess is that a lot of people don't know. I mean, there's so much stuff on our website. You know, you could spend easily days just sort of playing around and finding stuff. So I just don't know if people actually are aware.
Yeah, we'll probably put a link somewhere on the front page and then it'll bring, direct you to mine.
Okay, great. Okay, next, if there are no other questions, the Fall 2020 Assessment Update.
Absolutely. I'd like to welcome Amabel Crawford and Jackie Janicki for this part of the report. Amabel, I actually made you the host, so you can share the PowerPoint and guide it at your convenience. But we wanted to bring back our fall assessment data. As you know, we finished our NWA MAP and our Ames Web Assessments. So we have that information. Our teams have completed their day-to-days and they are off and running using that information to change groups, to change learning areas and to change interventions, et cetera, not only for students who need additional help and acceleration to catch up, but also students who are ready for more challenge. So Amabel and Jackie will talk us through the data and, and share those reports.
Thank you. Dana, can you, are you able to pull it up? I'm having some.
Oh, I have, yeah, if you want to make me the host.
With sharing my screen.
Yeah, just make me host again. I got it.
Okay, I just admitted two people. I hope they made it through.
Sure, it's fine. Bob, you have to host me. You're the host. And then I'll share it. Got it.
Okay, you're back.
Here you go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ready to go. There we go. All right. By all means.
Thank you. Yes, so as we talked at our, our previous Board meeting, we administered the Fall NWA Assessment in grades one through eight. And we also administered the Ames Web Plus Benchmarking Assessment, which was new for us doing it district-wide, K through eight. As, as we all know, all of our assessments were administered remotely using a couple of different tools, including GoGuardian to monitor students, some individually, some in small groups. But, but truly an incredible effort from our district team, our instructional coaches, our building principals, and especially our teachers and parents and students who did a really great job persevering through our first time doing district-wide assessments remotely. So today we will talk about the use of multiple data points to inform our next steps, as Dana mentioned. And then we will also go through all of the assessment data, not only at the district level, school level, and then our student groups. So for MAP, a couple of things that are different for MAP this year. And we do have new MAP norms for both reading and math, and those are set by NWA. So the last time the norms were set was the 2015 normative study. And so we have a new norm study for 2020. That is, is not because of the COVID situation. It is a process that MAP goes through and it just happened to fall at this time. So you will see at the top of each chart, the national norms. So this is the, the average for the beginning of the school year for each grade level. What we want to see is that our schools are performing on average at or above the national norm, of course. So the national norm is at the top here. And then for each school, we can see the, for math, the, the average RIT score for our students. We don't have a, a lot of comparison data in terms of growth data because we did not administer MAP in the spring, of course. So this is our, our sort of starting data point for the school year. The, the RIT score is specific to a WA. It is the Roush Unit Score that, that NWA uses across all of their assessments. And all schools who use NWA follow the, the same scoring system. So we can see here that overall, most of our grade levels for, for math were at or, or above the national norm. We see a tighter comparison between the norm and how our students performed when we get to the junior high level, which is, is something that we've consistently seen even outside of the school closure and the COVID situation. Still sitting close to the norm or a little bit above it, but some, some tighter percent, or some tighter comparisons. Specifically, if you look at sixth grade math, for example, we're just a hair below the national norm. So that's something that we would want to keep our eye on. Also, just if you could go, yeah. Yeah, thank you. In looking at our student groups for math, so we took a look at the comparison. And really for, for this chart, what's, what's most helpful is to take a look at how each student group is performing on MAP in comparison to the all-students group. That's typically how the state looks at our state-level data as well. So the, the national norm, we know that most of our grade levels were at or above the national norm. So if we're looking to identify an area of need for, in terms of gaps in performance, really that gap is in comparison to how the, the average score for the all-students in comparison to how these student groups are performing. So for example, our, our English language learners, we want to take a look at the comparison between how they're performing compared to our all-students groups. We definitely see some significant gaps that we want to keep our eye on and keep addressing with our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. For example, consistently scoring, the student group is consistently scoring below the all-students group. So that's something that we are aware of. We are addressing in our school improvement plans and through our title allocations and through our additional programming as well. So this is how we would monitor the, the student groups, additional gaps between our students with IEPs and, and the all-students group. And, and these are student groups that we've, this is not new to us having our eye on. We've consistently looked at it from, from this vantage point as well. So then taking a look at reading, oh, and just if I could point out also, just on any of these charts for MAP, if there's an asterisk there, it's because that student group has less than 10 students. And so we don't typically, we don't get reporting on that group. It's a very small group at that grade level.
Just super quick, so for terminology reasons to make sure everybody understands, can you just be clear on what it means when you say national norms? Does that mean that students are performing at grade level? Is this like, can you just make sure everybody understands what it means to be, to be hitting the, the normative average?
Absolutely. So the national norm is based on NWA's normative study. As I mentioned, there is a, we have new norms for 2020. They were previously for 2015. And this is the average norm score for this grade level based on districts throughout the country who participate in NWA.
So can we assume that if a student is at least, a score is the national norm, that they are performing at grade level?
So NWA isn't really a, a grade level assessment. What it's telling us is that for this time in this school year, so the fall of 2020, this is where the average number, the average score that students in first grade, for example, are getting a RIT score of 155.9. So we would want to be at an average or above for our schools as well.
So is there any assessment that we do that provides evidence of whether students are performing at grade level?
So I, I think that would be more for our common assessments. So our, our curriculum-based assessments would tell us how students are performing on grade-level material throughout the school year. Certainly, NWA can give us an indicator on if a student is on, on track or where they should be for first grade, for example, or for any of the grade levels. But as the scores change with growth percentiles and growth goals throughout the school year, students may, because the test is adaptive, students may go, their, their, their goals may go well beyond their grade-level score. Okay, so looking at reading.
Can I ask a quick, Amabel, I know that we had a disruption in sort of our last year's plans. But last year, at some point, we were sort of working towards some, some way of reporting, collecting data and reporting the results of those common assessments. Is that sort of fallen by the wayside because of COVID? Is there any hope to getting that back on track this year?
No, that, that is still in place. We are still giving our common assessments. We are still using the Common Assessment spreadsheet that we shared last year to be able to collect that data. Certainly got off to a slower start than in previous, than, than in last year when we started it. But that is still in place and it is still something that we are using to be able to, to make instructional decisions for students.
What does a teacher do if the Ames Web or MAP data conflicts with the Common Assessment data?
Yeah, and, and it very well could. Those, that, that's why, that's the triangulation of data that we rely on. So Ames Web scores, and that's why it's so important that, that we brought Ames Web to sort of our assessment toolkit this year to round that out. So Ames Web, MAP, Common Assessment Data, we look all together. And, and when we sit down and have our day-to-days and have conversations about what additional supports to provide for students. For example, if, if the Common Assessment data is saying that, that a student is consistently scoring very high on their curriculum-based assessments and the teacher can provide insights on that, those assessments and student performance, but their MAP data is, is maybe not as high. Sometimes that can tell us that maybe that was a bad testing day for that student. Maybe one of those scores is an anomaly. And it, you know, just in terms of, because there are so many common assessments throughout the school year, it's, it's less likely that a Common Assessment data point as a whole is going to be an anomaly or a testing, a function of testing administration because those assessments are given consistently throughout the school year versus MAP or Ames Web where we have it, we take it a day, it's the snapshot, and, and then we move on. So that's why we need all of those data points together.
And then historically, I think, and, and so, you know, memory fades with time. But we've talked a lot in the past about a bit of a cliff. At least it shows up in the MAP data typically between fifth and sixth grade, especially in math. And I'm kind of not really seeing that here, so, or at least, you know, it may not be as much forward progress as we want in the sixth grade. you know, it may not be as much forward progress as we want in the sixth grade and there's all kinds of caveats. This is fall data, et cetera.
Sure.
But do you think we've fixed that? Do you think it's just not showing up here because it's not spring data? You think we still have work to do on that front?
I think it's a combination. So MAP typically says that we should expect some sort of, certainly not a dramatic dip, but some sort of drop in sixth grade because of the change in the assessment. What we, what you're referencing previously, Cam, is that we typically saw a much more dramatic drop in from fifth to sixth grade than whether, you know, MAP, whether it was guidance from MAP or not, it was a bigger drop than what we were comfortable with, certainly. So I think it's a combination of, I do think we are getting stronger with the transition from fifth to sixth grade. I think it's something that we need to also keep our eye on because we know this was just a very different circumstance to assess students under. So it's something that I would want to, want us to keep our eye on throughout the school year before we sort of tag it as a huge success or or an anomaly. So.
Have we looked at, so we have fall data here. Have we compared this data set, we'll say last fall, to test the hypothesis that, you know, our kids suffered because of the shutdown in the spring? Are they starting the year on average where they should? Are they a little behind? Or can we not tell?
You know, it depends on the grade level. We have taken a look at that. The norms are different. So, you know, the reason we didn't do a clear-cut comparison between this presentation between last year in the fall and this year in the fall is because the NWA adjusted the norms. So it wouldn't be an exact comparison and NWA really sort of discouraged districts from doing that just because it's not a true comparison. But I will say, just looking at our numbers from last year, what we're seeing is pretty consistent with, you know, with the exception of a few grade levels, it's pretty consistent with where we've been in the fall in comparison to the norm. What we want to and have to keep our eye on is that as the school year progresses and what we want to see in the spring is that students are also meeting those growth goals. Right now, this is not based on growth. This is just based on the written norms for each grade level. So the next step is to make sure that students are keeping up with their growth targets.
I had a question. Did we decide if we were gonna, we're gonna venture to do this all again in the spring or if we were going to stay with our twice-a-year assessment?
So we, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
Yeah, winter, yes, winter MAP. That's what we had gotten rid of.
Okay. Yeah, we are, we, right now, we are not planning to pick up MAP assessment again in the winter. We will give it in the spring. And just if I can add, you know, some of the reasoning with that is that we wanted to make sure that we were freeing up instructional time also to make sure that we are sort of not testing ourselves into a loss. And then also we have the Common Assessment data that, again, is that post-check throughout the school year. Okay, so if we could, can you go down? There you go. Thank you. So again, taking a look at reading and our student groups, keeping an eye on those groups that I mentioned before in comparison to the all students group, definitely want for reading, want to keep our eye on our performance of our EL students or students with IEPs. We also included the summer academy data. So the performance, the average RIT score at each grade level for our students who attended our summer academy program. We, in reading, we saw some closer to the all students group or the national norm at some grade levels with this group. At the junior high level, we saw a larger gap. So that's not so much for reading, but if we go back up to the math page, we did see a bigger gap with that. So that's something we want to keep our eye on as we've discussed before, wanting to make improvements and changes to our summer academy program. Keeping in mind that this was also our first year doing summer academy remotely as well. I'm going to hand it over to Jackie to talk about the EAMS Web data.
Good evening, everybody. So just to kind of review a little bit, our EAMS Web Plus, the way that it is designed is looking at, actually looking at the risk category of students now. So we assess the students K through 1, we're given the assessments 1 to 1 through the computer, and then 2 through 8 did take the assessments through the TestNAV application at home. So the way that EAMS Web looks at their data, the first thing is looking at tier 1, we consider those students low risk. So those students are students that will be meeting, most likely meet the end-of-the-year target. And when we say target, that is based on normative data that EAMS Web has taken a group of students, anyone that's taking EAMS Web. And it's also based on grade level expectations. They look at historical data based on all of the students that have taken the assessment. And then they look at that and put it together through the percentiles and that's how they get the composite. So just so you kind of know when they're talking about target, what that means. And then tier 2 is looking at students who are at a moderate risk for not meeting those spring targets that are set. And then high risk, those are students who are considered tier 3. And those are students that really need that high intensive targeted instruction to help them to meet their needs and their goals. Dana, do you want to go up to the? Okay, so this year, we just looked at the grade levels within the district. So we looked at students that are considered low risk, moderate risk, and then high risk. And as you can see, our categories are doing pretty well. The areas, you know, of concern, we do have our K1 students that are a little bit at a higher risk than I would like to see there. We would like to see that, you know, more in the 1 to 10th percentile of those students. We wouldn't want to see that high of a percentage of students in tier 3. So we are working with grade levels and working in buildings to kind of look at some different things that we can put in place just in the core to kind of help them get those basic skills down a little bit better and bring those numbers up. And that is looking really at reading and math. Those are the two areas that I think we really have to focus our attention in those two grade levels. EAMS Web is great as far as looking at a composite. So they're taking a few different types of assessments to get to that score, which helps us to also drill down at specific skills that students might be lacking. And there's a lot of wonderful reports in EAMS Web Plus that really can help buildings to really strategically plan around those groups of students and really see where those skills are having a difficulty. And we also do look at MAP and Common Assessments too. But we found that this is, it's pretty, it's been pretty reliable so far this year in looking at those K1 students.
I'm sorry, quick question. And we're progress monitoring based off this benchmark. That, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
And do we have, have you seen, and I hope so, I imagine so, do you see an initial growth from benchmark where you could say, okay, here's where we see some improvement?
You know what? We are just really starting. You know, we have been progress monitoring slightly, but I think that that we will hopefully, you know, as we're looking at interventions and putting those things in place consistently. Those K1 kids grow so awesomely normally, you know, through EAMS Web. By the time we look at this data in the spring, you know, I'm sure we will see some huge jumps. And also, you know, the progress monitoring data of those high-risk students will also, you know, we're setting those targets to be near to grade level or we may set them at about the 25th percentile. So we really are challenging students to just grow and grow through that progress monitoring data also.
Okay. And I think I, thank you for that. I think I know the answer to this already, but it would be nice to hear. The the skill sets, the discrete skills that are measured or tested or in the lower grades, K through 3. They, I mean, I'm assuming that, I know that EAMS Web 2 is something we've adopted fairly recently. So I just double checking our curriculum that we have ties in specifically to the, what they're being measured on. So for example, you know, phonemic awareness is in there, which is, you know, or phonics is in there, which more people are probably familiar with. That is something that, you know, they're not, you're not, we're not having a, you know, apples heavy instruction when we want to see how they're doing with their oranges. Do you follow? I mean, are we keeping, you know, like the awareness so that this group is, and of course, I imagine that within those variations in the reading scores, you know, we're looking at grouping specifically to target extra intervention for those specific discrete skills.
So that's one of the things that we really are looking at right now. Of course, you know, I'm new to the district, so I'm getting to know ReadyGen and all that, that curriculum. But I know that in kindergarten, so one of the things that we are focusing on is maybe doing a little extra of Haggerty. You know, I'm sure you're familiar with, it's a phonemic awareness program. That's a core tier 1 program. And I'm sure that there's aspects of it in ReadyGen, but sometimes it seems like the students coming in right now might need that double dose, you know. So we're really analyzing and really trying to work through that problem-solving process at the tier 1 level as we're using this data as a good, almost a good stepping stone to kind of have those conversations and look at that a little bit more closely. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, it does. And it reassures me what I assumed we were doing anyway. Thank you.
Can you just remind us the frequency of the EAMS Web testing?
Yeah, it is supposed, we should conduct it three times a year. So we haven't decided on when that winter benchmark is going to quite be yet. Annabelle and I still have to kind of look at that, but it is a really good. It should be done within, you know, January, February time, just to get a touchstone to see where universally everybody is. We don't give all the same assessments. There's a few we drop as the students get older, you know, as the winter and in spring assessments, but we can continue to give some that were low too. So we can kind of look at that. So hopefully, January, February, the TestNAV application is going to be a lot easier to use according to according to EAMS Web. So I'm happy about that. So hopefully it'll be a much easier process if we're still in the same situation we are now.
And the spring testing will not occur at the same time that MAP testing?
No, we will not do that. No. We will make sure we, you know, spread those out. So the kids are, yes, most definitely.
Jackie, this is Carolyn. I have a question. I'm just looking at the sixth, seventh, and eighth reading, seems extremely promising that that many are low risk. And then just in comparison to NWA, we hover a little closer to the national norm. So just what are your thoughts when you see that? How do you approach then these particular groups of students? If we have 90% that are in this low risk, how are we engaging them?
Well, during our data days, and I've been working closely with our MTS coaches at Parker and so has Annabelle, and we really did already kind of know the students that were tier 3. So we use some of our common assessments, what they're doing within the class, and then we're looking at their MAP data too. Knowing that, you know, these students did take these assessments at home, which doesn't mean that they're not all doing awesome, because I'm sure they are. But there, we did kind of see that the students that were tier 3 still were kind of struggling in class. And so we really designed things for their interventions around that to make sure that we were addressing their needs.
And then for the tier 1 students though, if we really do have those high populations of students that are really performing at high, high levels like this, what will we do for them?
Well, I think that is just really, you can kind of address that to Annabelle if you'd like, but I think just addressing the core and making sure that we're supporting them.
Yeah, I will add also for the junior highs, this is again why that triangulation between the assessments is so important and between the MAP assessment, the Common Assessment, and the EAMS Web benchmarking assessment is so crucial because for the junior high assessments, we really did have some prior indicator and some knowledge of that. This, the benchmark assessment in comparison to MAP is much easier on the junior high end. And so as Jackie mentioned, we're looking at that, not looking at these data points and isolation. We're also looking at it with MAP. Certainly don't want to say that our students did not, this is, they didn't earn the score. We know they took the assessment, but, but the content on the benchmark assessment seemed to be much easier for the students than the questions that they were getting exposed to on MAP. And so that's why it's so important for us to have those three data points so that we can see a more well-rounded picture or well-rounded story of a student in terms of data.
Okay.
Well, you know, the other thing is it's important to, as Annabelle said, the assessments are measuring different skills, right? So EAMS Web is a very sensitive, I'm not telling you, I think you don't know Carol, Carolyn, but EAMS Web is a very sensitive assessment. And we can use that to progress monitor it because it can pick up something as sensitive as a one-word, you know, increase per week in a student's oral reading fluency, for example. And, you know, it is an early literacy, literacy skill assessment as opposed to, as Annabelle said, MAP. It's going to get a little bit more content comprehension and some different literacy skills than this, you know, measure. So yeah, you're right. I do feel very positive about those literacy skills in our junior high kids. It means they are reaching junior high, ready to read, to learn. And then the other piece of that coin, as Annabelle said on the data side, is then looking at, okay, so now they have the MAP assessment. That's a true literacy assessment on comprehension and the application of reading. How are they doing? So it really gives us a great opportunity to compare literacy skills with the application of literacy. And if there's a gap there, where do we need to either backfill on our curriculum experiences or, you know, look at our program in general and make other changes?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would just add to that also, I think if we're really thinking about a cohort of students, for example, who would say have been in, gone through 161 from kindergarten through eighth grade, this is the type of spread at tier 1 that we should expect to see. Like, we should want to see students who, you know, if ideally a student has been with us since kindergarten, we should want to see a high, high number, especially at tier 1 at the junior high level because that means that our preparation for students from kindergarten through junior high is being effective. And so we're not sort of having to do a lot of that backfilling, backfilling across the board, as Dana mentioned, with literacy skills.
Hey, thank you. That makes sense. Could you, anyone? Could any of you talk about the student groups a little bit more about what you might see as closed gaps or gaps that are shrinking and what kind of direction that might suggest that we need to go on with specific populations?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dana. So for example, if we take a look at junior high alone, if we recall, a few years back, Parker was identified for achievement gaps in special education and also with free and students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. And those are the state-determined groups. That's the terminology. We use the same terminology applied by the state. So on one example, we would want to see continuous sort of closing of the gap between free and reduced, students qualifying for free and reduced lunch with the all students group. Again, as we mentioned, Again, as we mentioned, the all students group, for example, at sixth grade is, is already performing above the national norm. So for MAP, certainly want to keep growing that. And so the free and reduced lunch group, for example, is at 209.1 in comparison to 212.3 in sixth grade. So there, that group in sixth grade of students is performing a little bit below the all students group. So again, this is sort of entry data to the school year because what the, the next step is, is that while this doesn't seem like a huge gap, it's a few points below, but certainly not an incredible gap. But we want, what we want to see throughout the school year and in the spring is that this doesn't widen. So we want to make sure that our supports that we're providing for additional services for students in this group or any group are being effective. We want to continue to make sure that students who are receiving progress monitoring in this group, we're keeping track of their data and staying on top of what instructional change shifts we need to make with, with this group or any group of students. Because right now, the, the gap is, is not huge, but as the growth data develops throughout the school year, we would also want to see not just, you know, a maintenance of a, of this score, but a closure of that gap. And so what typically happens is, is that that gap can widen throughout the school year, and that's what we would want to keep our eye on.
And to speak to the special education data too, I think a really important thing to look at with MAP, and we can report that out, is the growth. You know, for our special education students, MAP will give all of the students a growth target. And as Annabelle said, the test is, it, it goes up and down based on the student's skill level. And we really want to make sure that they are closing that gap as far as making their growth target for, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. That is the wonderful thing about MAP. It, it shows us that learning is taking place by looking at that growth target. So I think that's a really important thing to focus on with our special education population too. Of course, we want their RITS to go up, but we really want to see that gap closing and that growth target being met at the end of the year. So just something to kind of think about.
Thank you.
So I think what would also be helpful is, I think it's great to see this snapshot in time for 2020, but we also don't have anything to compare it to. So we don't, I don't, we don't know. So we see that the, the gap, if we just look at the data that we have before us, it certainly looks like it's closing, but I don't know, we don't, I don't know what it looked like last year or the year before. And I think in order for us to see, to be able to measure true growth, I think we need to see a little bit of data that shows some trending. So we have a better picture.
Yeah, we could absolutely take a look at that and, and bring it back, just with the caveat that the, the norms are different. So we're, the comparison, we would just have to have that, that sort of understanding that the national norm has changed. So we could get a general idea, but it would not be an exact comparison.
Would, would it, I'm sorry, would it be possible to compare by percentile rank? Theoretically, if you're comparing this group, even if the norms are the same, couldn't you index that in terms of their percentile rank for people who took the test this go around and then compare it to a percentile rank for, I don't know, past years?
So it's.
Is that feasible?
So I would prefer if we could have a conversation about which question are we trying to answer? Because we can absolutely do those. The data is not comparable though unless we pull by cohort. So if we could drill down into, as you know, I think Michelle said, you know, if we want to try to compare, if that's the guidance from the board, what we can do is go back and work on those charts if we have a little bit more guidance on the questions that you're trying to answer. And if it's comparability, we can absolutely put those pieces together and bring some options back.
All right. Well, we have the data. I mean, every year you show MAP data, but, and even if we're not necessarily looking at a comparison or looking at the gap between our students and the national norm, honestly, I'm equally as interested in looking at how each category or population of students compares to all students. And so you can make, you don't have to make adjustments, but obviously calling out what the, that the norm has changed and you can, you know, give us guidance on how we should interpret the data based on that. But so I'm asking for, you know, a 10 hour long project, but I think you already have the data. I think for me personally, others may disagree, but I don't have anything to compare what I'm looking at too. So I would like to be able to see, especially since we've been talking about achievement gap for years now. And so in order for me to have an idea of how one group was doing the previous year versus this year, and is the gap really shrinking? I can't see shrinkage if I don't at least know what it looked like last year.
Can I make a suggestion or pose a question? Is this something that would be helpful to run through one of the committees that would look more closely at this? And then to Dana's point, to identify, work with Dana, administration to really identify what specifically we're looking for and then how would we report that? And then come, represent that to the board or, or send a follow-up, you know, report just to Dana's point. And so this doesn't become, well, which, what numbers are we trying to chase? And we have a little bit, and even in committee, that we have some built in mechanism by which we approach this at different times throughout the year or over the years.
Yeah, we could absolutely work with that.
With it going to our committee that Cam and Carolyn sit on, and I'm also not suggesting we have another full-on presentation. I'm just suggesting that in order for us to have a true picture of what progress really looks like, we have to look at more than one year worth, one year's worth of data.
Absolutely. Yes, we could definitely take that to learning and instruction and get those cohorts kind of mapped out. And, and then really the conversation with the board is, you know, as Steve said, kind of working on the, the format and the presentation. If we feel good about that, then we can run our data in those charts moving forward. So yeah, we could absolutely work with learning and instruction on that. And we'll probably come back to the board. Maybe not for a full presentation, but you know, just to make sure that we're gathering the information the right way and bringing it back in a way that the board would like to see it.
Thank you.
Oh, of course.
Are there any other questions regarding the assessment data? Okay, if not, then we will move on to the special education entry plan update.
Yes. Just let me get caught up here. Jackie, would you like to share your screen or do you want me to?
No, I can be host. That's fine. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Give me one second. Okay, there you go.
All right, there we go. Okay. So the way that I approached this was looking at that beginning time of my position here and just as a, just an aside, I'm just so happy to be here. And I love working with everybody and it's such a supportive administrative team. And my dog's always picked to bark right at this moment. And the teachers are awesome and my case managers and everybody, everybody's so great. So I just wanted to put that out there. And the board, of course, you guys are awesome too. So our immediate needs, I looked at that and then I kind of looked to our short term and then our long-term plan. So that's the way that I separated our presentation here. Okay. So in the beginning and kind of just looking as I took on the position, some of the things that I really focused on was making sure that our grants were completed, meeting with teachers, meeting with case managers, principals, really just to start building those relationships and understanding what really is needed. So I did do a quick needs assessment to, to staff, and I sent that out, I think before even July 1st. So I could get kind of an idea exactly where our needs were. And some of the things that came out through that is really looking at our MTSS, looking at how we are putting together our IEPs and writing goals. Those were definitely some things that popped out right away. So some of the action things that I did right away, I completed a district training on our 504 system. I also put together and developed all of our expectations for when we were being in person for hybrid and then also remote. And also put together some training as far as our workload assist, which is what our related service teachers and providers kind of keep track of their time and their planning with students and helps us to get some reimbursement. So that was making sure that that was being done consistently. And then, you know, bringing AIMS Web Plus back into the, to the mainstream here and getting our universal testing done. So I went through and worked with the AIMS Web Professional Development Team, and we have a great person that provides us that for us. And the MTSS coaches, administrators and special education staff were all trained on that. And really the outcome of looking at all of those early stages is really to cultivate those relationships with the district schools, families. And making sure that, you know, I'm putting together a plan of change in leadership that's as seamless as I can. So those were, that was the outcome of doing all of those things. And then looking more short term, so things that really were coming up right in those first opening of school. I had to complete a non-compliance report for the state just based on a couple of things from last year. A couple of our indicators, we just had to make sure that we provided the state with some data to support why we didn't meet those two expectations. They were very small, not a huge thing, but it's something that I did have to do and work on. Also, the training of, of teachers on the social emotional screening tool that is also part of AIMS Web, which is really just giving us a quick indicator of how students are feeling socially and academically as far as how they are functioning within the classroom. A challenge with remote learning, but something that districts and really happy to bring that to Flossmoor, you know, having a social emotional screening tool is more, is so important during this time. And it can give us a little snapshot on how students are feeling. And then just continuing to attend, building meetings and meeting with special education teams, meeting with case managers and just really starting to establish the best practices for our students. And really kind of learning a little bit more about where we are, you know, and the things that we may need to work on. So that can really only be done through collaboration and through listening and through meeting with staff. So that's pretty much the things that I have focused on in the last few months. And also working with Annabelle collaboratively and also working with the instructional teachers who are wonderful and who are bringing our students back in person this week. So that did take a lot of planning and a lot of mindful thinking. And we did. So I'm, I'm proud to say that that was something we focused a lot on too in the last month. And this is really, again, the outcome too, that I'm really focusing on this year also, is really understanding those programs and, you know, understanding how we can strengthen those procedures for students. And that we're really looking at all learners, you know, within our general and special education. You know, what are the programs? What are the procedures we have in place to help them to be successful? And those are short term right here, but is always, always a goal. Okay. Then long term. So right now, Dana and myself are working to find a outside agency to do a comprehensive audit of the special education department, just to give us a little bit more insight to have a little more idea as to what our department needs. And it's always good to have that outside eye coming in to help with that process. Also, providing some professional development for our special education staff in writing those defendable comprehensive IEP plans, which are so important. So I'm really looking to, looking forward to planning that professional development. And also, we are up for audits for our preschool program this year. I'm not quite sure when that's all going to be happening. But that is something that is going to be extensive too, as far as getting all of those findings together and reporting that out to the state. And then last but not least, really focusing on looking at our MTS practices and looking at how we can have the best possible MTSS program and making sure that we have that comprehensive system that's addressing all the tiers for our students. And really focusing, first, looking at a needs assessment and working with staff to kind of see again where we are. And then moving forward, what that plan is going to look like. And then right here, as I said, establishing outstanding, you know, we want nothing but the best at Flossmoor. So we want that multi-system tier, we want our early childhood program, and we want our special education program to meet the needs of all of our students. So that's where I'm at. Any questions?
I had a question regarding MTSS and just your job as the special ed director. I don't know anything about, just my education doesn't lend itself to knowing anything about the special ed program, but do those usually fit together or would that be something better suited given to, not given to somebody else, but you know what I mean, having somebody else run just the MTSS system? Or is that something that usually is put together with a special ed director?
So, you know, in this district, we worked collaboratively with the learning and instruction director and the special education director. And the reason why it's a collaborative effort is because normally, when we look through the system, students that may end up in a tier three situation, you know, that they are in a tier three, that they're needing the most intensive intervention. Sometimes, not always, but sometimes they can end up needing special education services. And one of the things that I have found, when there is a strong MTSS program and you have a lot of great things within the core, within tier one, within tier two and tier three, when we really have a system that runs smoothly, RTI or MTSS can really be what its true meaning is, which is response, early intervention. You know, that we are response, responding early on of the needs of students. And we might be, in some ways, you know, now it's probably 20 years old, the whole RTI, and I've been in it the whole time, is really looking at that early intervention for students. So when we have a program that's really comprehensive, we can help to meet the needs of students maybe before they end up needing such a restrictive placement or needing special education services. So I think that, to answer your question, Christina, I do think that they do work hand in hand. I do think that you need to have both sides of the coin to kind of see, you know, how the program is working. And you kind of have to know what general education looks like, but you also have to know what special education looks like too, to really make informed decisions.
That helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jackie on her entry plan?
I don't have a specific question on this plan, but I do have a question regarding just your plan and your, and your goals in general. Is the, how often can we, actually, let me preface what I'm getting ready to say with the fact that special education has been such a high priority. Obviously, all of our programs are, but we have paid special attention and, and we will continue to focus on special education. and we will continue to focus on special education and Parker as well. But now I just lost my train of thought. Oh, so my question is, how often we expect to have some sort of report about, you know, sort of how your first year is going? Especially since you mentioned that you and Dana are looking for an outside third party to come in and do an audit. So I am curious about the quotes that you did receive before on that. But in general, what's your plan in terms of sort of updating the board on just progress throughout the year?
Well, definitely. Well, I can have Dana speak to that too, but I think definitely, you know, when the audit is complete, you know, having that report be shared with the board. Also, I guess what my question to Michelle for you is, in looking at data, you know, is that something that you're looking at as far as, you know, what you would want to see? I mean, I can update you guys as much as you want, whatever you need. But would you want it more with data, with the MTSS process? Or, you know, just let us, you know, let me know which one of those things would be?
Yeah, and I don't have specifics to offer you right now. I think my question now was just, were you planning, was there a plan to sort of, this is your entry plan, sort of your, I don't even know how many days you've been working now. But, you know, this is your entry, and do you anticipate doing a check-in, you know, sometime during the next, you know, during the winter term and during the spring term? I mean, I guess, I can't tell you specifically what we want to hear, but I will follow up with that. I'm sure the board will as well. But what we don't want is for this to be the only time we actually hear from you and updates and how things are going. I mean, I think that regular, some sort of cadence around the frequency, I think, would be very helpful for us so that we can sort of just be more aware, I think, of what's going on. Especially since this has been a high-focused area of ours for the past couple of years.
Michelle, if I could add, I think if for right now, especially now that we have some students coming into the building, if we could hear by the end of the second quarter, how that went and how those students, you know, have seen an improvement from, you know, going back to in-person. You know, if the semester goes through without, you know, without a hitch and everything's fine. I'd love to hear the improvements, you know, made or the things that need to be worked on or whatever it is, just to see how that's gone. I think that would be helpful too in getting our plan together for whatever it looks like to eventually go back to school in person.
So updates don't necessarily have to be quantitative. I mean, they could be qualitative updates.
I can give you a timeline. So obviously, we're talking tonight about Jackie's entry plan and she really has done a nice job. Joining a district is tough in general, but then joining in the middle of a pandemic and trying to get a read on, you know, a department and a focus and all those pieces are certainly tough. We'll come back to the board at the COW in November about the audit. Hopefully have that approved in December. Begin that process in January. We'll also have our department plan updates for the board to have a general understanding of those. And then realistically, it's probably on some level, whether it's a direct sped update in relation to the audit or coming back on some MTSS improvements or the learning and instruction kind of crossover. You can probably expect some pieces almost monthly, like I said, even if they're not, this is a direct special education update, just with the different COGS working together. And it's really moving on those pieces, especially as we're into that full special ed audit. We'll have to make some decisions about the direction that we're going in our district and how we want to continue to program. We'll need to talk about what we offer in district versus out of district, et cetera. So probably quite a few conversations, Michelle, and we'll really try to keep them focused so they're really moving us forward. But certainly, I would say over the next four months, you will see special ed on every COW.
So. I have a question. So I also heard the audit, which I have a problem with. I'm in favor of always trying to look at how to strengthen our programs. But if I recall, we did a MTSS report. And I guess I'm wondering, is that being looked at, used, how that's being folded into all of this assessing?
Yep, absolutely. We've been using that report. We shared that with Jackie. We're making, you know, some adjustments. Again, we need to get into that full audit. And I think as we're, you know, looking at the structures that we have in place now and the ones that we have changed in the past based on that MTSS report and the ones we want to change moving forward, we're just continuing to make adjustments. You know, I think the challenging piece right now is we can change a number of things. The difficulty is going to be measuring the impact because we have a number of variables and factors that are impacting whether it's achievement or growth or program viability, pick your topic. So we really need to, you know, focus on how to measure those adjustments that we're making. And, you know, especially as we're implementing a multi-tier system of support in a remote setting, that is a challenging piece. So we're going to have to closely monitor our data, particularly on the Ames website, and make sure that we're implementing those interventions with fidelity. So the audit will be a great piece for us, just as we're, you know, kind of coming off the last, you know, five weeks where we had a loose conversation about out-of-district placements and then internal programming, et cetera, it really does flow together. Because what we'll get out of that is certainly, you know, your comprehensive 25,000-foot view of special education programming and multi-tier systems of support in District 161, but also down to the, okay, here's how we write goals that either do or do not set kids up for success. Here's how we're setting up, you know, programming for children with, you know, these characteristics or these needs in order to have success or not, right? And then we can make those decisions about how we want to move forward with our programs and plans. So the timing seems to be right on, certainly. We're definitely not sitting on our laurels and I think that's evident with the MTSS conversation and the data. One of the things that I've shared just with Jackie, I'll share with all of you, I really appreciate how she brings her, that former principal perspective to this role and looking at how we're using data, why we're using data, the conversations that we're having around changing student experiences based on data. And, you know, I feel, and I would say, we know that the way that we're looking at our data this year and the way that Jackie has implemented changes initially are focused on the actual data and what our kids are doing and what they need. So we're in a really good position right now. Certainly want to make additional adjustments, especially on the intervention side and making sure that, you know, we have consistency across buildings. It's one of the things that we're always working on, especially as we identify the needs of those kids and try to match them with an intervention that's going to focus specifically on that. So I would say, you know, to Michelle's point, monthly, you'll have updates. If there are special pieces that you'd like to add to those topics, we can certainly add those as well.
Hey Dana, I know that I would appreciate some view, perspective, at least consideration on how this impacts budget, either up or down.
How will, which part impact budget?
It sounds as if there may be proposed recommendations, modification changes that would have used. In any way that that's looked at, I'd definitely like to see how that's going to impact either positively or negatively on the budget.
Yep, we'll absolutely, because some of those could be pretty costly, David. So we'll want to make sure that everyone on the board has a clear understanding about what X means versus Y, what this purchase means versus that one. We'll definitely make sure that we're building those pieces in. Thank you. Okay, great.
I think you have the next agenda item, right Jackie?
She does.
Oh, I do, I do.
We're just, good, good Jackie. No, no, by all means, you're set.
Okay, so we are tomorrow, our Heather Hill students are coming back and Kathy Knabwa and I went through all of the buildings on Thursday and just kind of did a walkthrough and made sure that everybody had what they needed and everybody felt as if we had the buildings covered as far as their needs. So I'm feeling very positive and I think at our next meeting, I will be happy to update the board on everything that's gone in those weeks. And like I said, as soon as I start talking, I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, we will move on to the next item, which includes policy updates and first readings of revised policies as presented on the agenda.
Absolutely. I'd like to welcome Eric tonight to talk about some board policies. Eric?
Hi, everyone. So, excuse me. Policy updates for this month are Section 8, which is our community relations section, one of the smaller sections in the policy manual. And as I stated on my report, most of the revisions are very minor. So those policies are attached in board docs, nothing significant of notes. And once we get through Section 8, we're going to go back to Section 6, which deals with instructions. So Ms. Cropper and I will be making sure we go over those together with a fine-tooth comb. And once we're through that, we will have a fully updated entire policy manual.
All right. Questions or comments? No? Okay, we will move on to the next item, which, sorry, I just lost track.
It's letter G. It is the Norton LifeLock employee benefit.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm very excited that I found this opportunity that Norton LifeLock not only is just a consumer product, but it is something that various companies can offer to their employees as a benefit. So either the company can contribute towards the cost or we can offer it as voluntary deduction for our employees. So we're going to go that route. We're going to offer it to all employees of the district. And the reason why we wanted to do this is because a lot of us are working remotely. We're using district devices. We're using personal Wi-Fi connections. So in the ever-growing information age, when things can be stolen or swiped technologically, we want to make sure we offer some protection for our employees. Also, Illinois is seeing a rash of fraudulent unemployment claims. We've had three as of this report in our district. So unfortunately, those individuals have to go through some reporting to police departments and credit bureaus and all of that. So having LifeLock, LifeLock takes care of that work. And if somebody experiences some financial losses while they have LifeLock, LifeLock offers some protections and some reimbursements. So an employee's cheapest plan for themselves would be $7.99 a month. They can purchase protection for themselves and their family, or they can upgrade their package. And then we'll be setting up voluntary payroll deductions and running this through open enrollment, which starts in two weeks. So we're super excited to offer this to all of our employees.
You're excited about open enrollment?
Heck, yeah, yes. We do videos, we do the whole nine yards, Terry and I, you know, get people psyched up and jazzed, you know? We've got, Fran and I are doing some awesome info sessions on the health insurance plan. So yeah, we are super stoked about open enrollment this year.
Can I ask a quick question, Eric? This is exciting, as was the policies. The, I was looking for this, but so can you just clarify just a little bit with the fraudulent claims, unemployment claims? Are you saying that people have pretended to be district employees and made claims?
Yeah, so people have obtained district employees' information and have created through the Illinois Department of Employment Security, they filed unemployment claims and pretending to be our employees. And then we're getting the call saying, okay, you know, you have this employee that's claimed to be no longer with you. And we're like, hold on, no, they're still with us and they're still employed. So we're getting some of those. I know a couple of teachers have gotten the IDES cards in the mail to their homes. So yeah, unfortunately, that's hitting us hard.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that it did not come across as we have three employees who have made.
Oh, no, no, no.
Just to clarify, okay.
Yeah, you know, just, that's a good point, Steve. You know, I would say to anyone on this call, whoever can hear my voice, make sure that you're checking your mail. Make sure that you're checking your email because as I have spoken with other superintendents in South Cook, this problem is rampant. And for us to have three cases, it speaks to the vigilance of our HR department and everyone else because I could tell you similar-sized districts, when I heard their numbers, I almost fell out of my chair. And people are trying to take advantage right now. So we want to make sure that we can offer just one more level of support service to our teachers if they want to take advantage of this to keep themselves a little bit safer that we could do that. But I know that Eric and Terry are very focused on this subject and I just appreciate their attention to the detail.
Any more questions or comments? Thanks, Eric. November board topics.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, of course. The two should be quick. Obviously, the levy really dominates a lot of our conversations. But then really coming out of that levy topic and those conversations at the end of November, we will go into some more staffing and strategic planning conversations in December because we'll need to start making those plans for the 21-22 school year, which is, I mean, it's hard to say, hard to believe that that's what we're talking about right now. But really, I would say the next six weeks, that's our spring board into the next school year. So we know that in the past, we would have had some great conversations about our summative designations. They've rolled forward a lot of the report card data, but there are a few new things, but nothing of note. We don't have any really great data points in there since the COVID closures. But as you can see here, the tax levy will dominate our conversations and so will prepping to go into the work for next year. And then everyone's favorite topic.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no more questions on that.
Yeah. Last item on the agenda, the 2020 IASB delegate resolutions.
Yes, so on Saturday, November, no, we will vote on November 9th. And then on Saturday, November 14th, our delegate representative will cast votes on behalf of the District 161 Board. I don't believe we have selected a delegate representative officially, but Steve's name has been mentioned multiple times as he scoots off of the screen slowly. We've talked about it a number of times. We're not going to vote on these tonight. What I'm asking you to do is take a look at all the resolutions. You should have all of them. If you remember, there are eight of them. If you are in this packet, and I will show that. As you flip through, at the beginning, it will identify, you know, these are the new resolutions, these are the old ones, et cetera. It will also list whether or not it's recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards for it to be adopted. As I said, there are eight. There's one on a public financing option for schools, which is a do not, a recommended, do not adopt. There's one on gun storage, which really is outside the purview of the School Board Association. They would recommend not adopting. The third one is on the school report card, putting pressure on the Illinois Association or the State Board of Education to generate that data by June 1st. And I think by all accounts, that seems impossible. It's another do not adopt. Item four is a resolution on pre-kindergarten teacher licensure and making some adjustments to that. So again, Illinois Associated School Board is recommending not to adopt. Number five, though, on the teacher shortage and making some adjustments to provisional teacher licensing. The IASB would recommend do adopt that one. And then on the final few, we have a recommendation to make election days an official e-learning day. Right now, it's a day of non-attendance. And so the recommendation is to adopt that, since at this point, everyone has the infrastructure for the most part to handle e-learning on those days. The seventh one is a recommendation for local pandemic control. Essentially that when we do have health emergencies, there's a regional and focused way that decisions are made. So that, you know, you may not, you know, capture all of, you know, the areas in South Cook. If there are different, you know, metrics, for example, in Flossmore, looking at our infection rate compared to another town's infection rate, et cetera. And then finally, and that was a recommended do adopt. And then finally, another local control on the pandemic. Where did that go? And that is another, that one is a do adopt, it goes a little bit further. And it's almost identical to number seven. So when we come back at our next meeting, all of you will, will do up and down votes on all of the eight resolutions. Steve, Steve or whichever board member is the delegate representative will have her or his marching orders. And then they will go represent the District 160 Board at the resolution meeting on Saturday, November 14th.
Okay, is this a virtual meeting?
Completely.
Okay, so, okay.
I think some people who have, you know, risk issues going.
You know, you want someone with experience, you know, maybe somebody who's done it before.
I think it could be time for opening yourself to new generation of delegates.
That's right, whatever, every, you know, new board member wants to be in their career on the board as a delegate rep. This could be a great opportunity.
You get a really cool pen every year.
That's right.
You know, I think unless, you know, Cam is just dying to do it, you know, I vote for Steve.
I vote for Steve. You know, you guys are untouched, I really am.
The trust, I mean, there's just so much trust.
You need one more pen.
I do, I do, and I get a highlighter too. I don't know if you guys are aware, it's this highlighter, it has a marker on one side, a highlighter on the other.
No, you stop talking because you might convince Cam. So we, we say Steve.
Really cool pen.
All right, well, if you have any questions on the resolutions and you want to talk them through, please feel free to give me a call. Otherwise, we'll do roll call votes when we come back on each of the resolutions and then we'll be set for the 14th. And that's the end of the report. And we do not need a closed session.
Do we need closed session?
Nope.
Oh, yes, so with that, the time is 8:16 and I need a motion to adjourn.
The moot, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, have a wonderful week.
Good to see everyone, have a great night.